Call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting.
This meeting is being recorded.
City Council. It's Monday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven P. M. And there's no reportable actions from our closed session. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santinas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
Tonight, we'll have the invocation offered by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and that'll be provided by Elizabeth Corfus, Director of Planning and Building Services. So please stand with me.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elizabeth and Raymond, for what you offered this evening. Begin our announcements. The state of California COVID- nineteen rent relief program is still available for California renters and their landlords who have been impacted by COVID- nineteen. The program has been revised to cover a hundred percent of rental and utility arrears payments and prospective rent to qualified households. For more information, please visit the state's website. That's at housingiski.com or call the Housing is Key COVID- nineteen Assistance Line, and that can be reached at one eight three three four two two four two five five. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower has begun our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs once every ten years, following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw the district lines based on the population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city levels. We would like to hear from our residents. What would you like your district boundaries to remain in this? Or the same, or do you have any suggestions or changes? Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in the process. For more information, you can visit redistricting website at www.drawbellflower.org. Also, redistricting@bellflower.org or contact the city's clerk office, five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two 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 two. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. To combat significant financial challenges brought on by the pandemic, the L.A. County Department of Consumers and Business Affairs has announced the campaign Get Ahead L.A., which seeks to safely which seeks to safety guide L.A.'s county residents to the financial resources they need to reach their financial goals. Through Get Ahead L.A., county residents can find important resources to help manage their unique financial challenges. Get Ahead L.A. provides residents with free resources such as debt management, wealth building, housing stability, and more. Get Ahead L.A. is a free online service which is available at getaheadla.org or you can call one eight hundred five nine three eight two two two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which this month will take place on Tuesday, August thirty-first, from nine A. M. to ten A. M. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. We hope to see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzinez. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Southeast L.A. County Workforce Development Board has teamed up to host a job fair on Tuesday, August thirty-first, from nine A. M. to one P. M. at the City of Paramount Paramount Park Community Center, located at one four four zero zero Paramount Boulevard in the City of Paramount. So bring your resume in hand and be prepared to interview on the spot. For more details about the event, please contact Ben Sandoval at five six two four eight four five zero one two or Barbara Croson at five six two six three four three nine eight zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. At this time, we would like to recognize two Bellflower residents that were designated as Veteran of the Year by Assemblymember Christina Garcia of the Fifty-Eighth Assembly District. First, Mr. Dale Wilson is a United States Army veteran that after battling substance abuse managed to turn his life around with the help of others and secure permanent housing. He uses his journey as a tool to connect and build trust with the individuals he serves. He now works at the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority as a homeless engagement team member. Dale happily lives in Bellflower with his wife and cats, and he recently is active and participates in panels where he shares his journey to housing. Second is Mr. Michael Biggles. Is a United States Navy veteran who uses his love of dogs to enrich the lives of veterans across Southern California. Michael shares the therapeutic comfort of his three Rottweilers with other veterans. He and his service dogs spend time with retired and elderly veterans as well as the children of active duty at the Los Angeles Air Force Base in El Segundo. Michael resides in Bellflower and also enjoys showing off his dogs in dog shows. Congratulations to those Bellflower residents on your achievements, and thank you for your tremendous work and dedication to the Bellflower community. So Mr. Wilson and Mr. Biggles will receive a certificate that indicates that we're honoring them, and it says here on Dale Wilson, two thousand twenty-one Veteran of the Year. Congratulations being two thousand twenty-one Veterans of the Year by Assemblymember Christina Garcia, representing California's Fifty-Eighth Assembly District. We thank you for your tremendous service. Applaud you for your achievements and wish you well. Signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. So we have one for Dale, and I have a second one here that is the exact same thing indicating our honor for Michael, and we'll send these to you via U.S. mail. And we want to congratulate you on the great work you've done and making Bellflower proud, and we wanted to recognize your activities. All right, moving on, Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
All right, I'll be right with you here as I get to the right page to read about making sure. If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it'll appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press star six to raise your hand. You will be recalled upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to us tonight in the queue?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
All right, thank you for announcing that. Moving on. Item eleven, public hearings, there are none. Item twelve A, ordinance and resolutions for consideration, Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash forty-eight, a resolution conditionally establishing the salary ranges and benefits for employees and conditionally authorizing the city manager to implement such changes. Ms. Crumley is on the phone to answer any questions. If you have any staff, it's recommending approval.
All right, any members of the council want to ask questions of Human Resources?
Not seeing any questions, Mayor. I'll adopt Resolution twenty-one dash forty-eight, Basic Salary Pan in addition to Benefits, and authorize the city manager to implement the plan soon as appropriate.
Second, Mr. Mayor, before we go, we take a vote, I just want to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank our city manager and our negotiating staff, and also thank the union representative and our staff for agreeing to this agreement. We know that it's always tough to have a negotiating agreement, but to me, the way it happened was it was a good compromise. I think we try our best to give the best to our employees, to attract them and keep them. At the same time, we're mindful that our finances are limited. It always goes back to what our residents will pay. So with these two agreements that are being presented before us, I'm really thankful for all who was involved in this negotiation to come up with this great compromise. I think the city's going to be better with this, and I think one thing that I learned from negotiation is nobody can, neither side can be happy all the time. So a compromise is you walk away not getting everything that you want, and I think that's what happened here. So it's a great compromise, and again, kudos to the staff and also to our management led by our city manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments before we go to a vote? All right, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Moving on to twelve B.
In an almost identical action, this is consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash forty-nine, a resolution fixing the salary rates and benefits for unrepresented employees and authorizing the city manager to implement that plan as appropriate. Again, Ms. Crumley can answer any questions, and again, staff recommends approval.
Any questions of staff or someone who might make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve Resolution twenty-one dash forty-nine.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Sunny Sanzinez, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Without any more discussion, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart?
Sorry, consideration and possible action to create a two-councilmember ad hoc committee to review and consider the city's existing code of conduct with the samples California Joint Powers Insurance Authorities, J.P.I.A., policy for establishing city council norms of operation. Again, the council has a longstanding norm of operation policy that they have. J.P.I.A. has asked, we take a look at it. We're looking at nothing more tonight than the appointment of two members of the council to serve as a subcommittee to look at both documents and to recommend any changes if they even have any after reviewing.
So I would look for, I would think that one of the ways to consider this item is to create a two-member committee of our council that could work with this and bring back their recommendations sometime in the next month. Do I have any volunteers that would like to participate in this committee?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can I just make some comments?
Sure you can.
Some kind of background information about this?
Go right ahead.
As the city council's representative to the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I became a member of the executive committee of J.P.I.A. And one of the things that we addressed is claims. And during the course of my tenure in the J.P.I.A., there's some issues related to the conduct of council members in other cities. Let me assure you, the public, that I've been sitting here, I've been elected here and city council for many years now, and I can assure you that our council members conduct ourselves in a very high standard, very professionally, both in public and in private. But there are some council members in other cities that don't do that. So the staff of J.P.I.A. conducted a study to establish some kind of what they call council norms in operations. And so they came up with a document and they presented it to the executive committee. And right away, as soon as I got a copy of that, I presented that to our city manager, Mr. Jeff Stewart, to kind of compare that with our code of conduct. And I know that we have very good code of conduct, but my feeling is it's always nice to compare that with what's acceptable conduct of norms with other cities because J.P.I.'s council norms is a compilation of the best practices of all the member cities of J.P.I.A. So I think it's a good idea to compare that and see how we stand, and I won't be surprised if we do well once the final analysis is completed. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sunny Sanzinez. So again, I would offer the opportunity, anybody would like to serve on this?
I would like to offer Sunny up since he knows more about this than anybody here. And maybe he would like to pick somebody.
I'd be glad to volunteer.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm the alternate to the J.P.I.A., as delegate, I'd be happy to serve. Again, I'm also an active member of the League of California Cities, you know, governance, transparency, and with the Labor Relations Committee. So I thought that would have been the...
I like it. I, yeah.
Look at the assignment anyway, since I was the alternate, so.
All right.
I'd like to move that we nominate Sanzinez and Hamada.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Thirteen, no, we're down to fourteen?
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts or any of this evening's closed session items? No, that's not right. That's what it says here, so I just read it, you know?
Throw the clerk under the bus.
Whoa.
Are any of the members of this council wish to pull for separate discussion or are you conflicted on any of them?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item fourteen D.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict for fourteen E due to property location.
All right. Anybody else? I have conflict with property locations for fourteen D like David, fourteen E like Edward, and fourteen F like Frank. Oh, that was not, okay, I'm just, F and D, fourteen E I'm okay on. Mr. Dutton, have you anything to offer?
I have no conflict.
All right. So let's bring forward fourteen B. Mr. Sanzinez, you have the floor. B, okay.
The D is in the dog.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you conflict on fourteen D as in David?
No, he unwound it.
I unwound it, so I'm only on...
Fourteen F.
F and E.
F and E, okay.
Okay. You want me to leave the room? All right. When in doubt, conflict yourself out, right?
Yeah.
All right, Sunny, you have the floor.
All right. Mr. Size, can you give us a synopsis of the the application for modification of the cannabis business permit for BBNY Logistics?
Sure, the applicant is actually on the call as well, but I can give an overview of the item that we have here. So it's a modification application for a cannabis business permit, a C.B.P. from BBNY Logistics. So that modification application was submitted on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one to change the business name and modify the ownership. So essentially, we have BBNY Logistics, which is being proposed to be changed to Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc. And the original owner, Bernice, or Berenice Cristerna, she will remain as the hundred percent owner of the business. So that's what this application was submitted for. So you have that name change, and then you also have the ownership modification.
Okay. Now, can you clarify, because if I recall, there were two owners initially?
It was a fifty-fifty proposition before with the previous fifty percent owner.
Okay, and that was changed?
It's changed to the single ownership of Ms. Cristerna taking a hundred percent ownership of the company.
Okay, yeah. So I think this is kind of different from the one that we processed before. It's a lot easier because it's from two to one. So my, the other question I have is, did we confirm that there's only one single owner now, legally speaking?
Yes, under Dynasty Alliance Grow.
There's only one single owner?
Correct.
Because from, I think Bernice can chime in later on. I just want to make sure that it's clear to her that should there be a change in ownership later on, then it's going to be going to a different process.
Correct.
Because it's a lot easier from two to one. We don't have to fingerprint anyone. We don't have to background check anyone. But if she should decide to do otherwise later on, I just want to make sure that she's clear that she has to go through the process. It's going to be very different from what it is now.
She's clear, we made it clear.
Okay, so all right, very good. That's all I have, thank you so much.
All right, anybody else? That was all we had for any discussion. So I'm looking for a motion for our consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so the motion is made by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports. Mr. Sanzinez, why don't you begin for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things here. We've been away for some weeks because we were dark in the second half of July. So I just want to thank again Nestam Bian for hosting a kind of a grand opening ribbon cutting on July fourteenth. If you have not been to Nestam Bian, try it. My family and I went there the following week, and it was great. And also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff of Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Public Safety, whoever's involved in the street fest. It was very successful, well-attended. In spite of the pandemic, I think the staff did well. And thank you to all the residents who showed up. I hope you enjoyed it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to echo those comments of our fellow councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. It's, it was great to see these events transpire with the street fest and everything at the last one. I also would like to congratulate the Nestam Bian and then Iron Fire, too, for their ribbon cutting ceremonies, and I wish them well, and they're good additions to our city. So just want to thank all staff as well for all their work on the street fest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just add a few more. Again, I too echo the sentiments again presented for the Nestam Bian and also Iron Fire, had a great time at both. Last month, I woke up the chamber, had their morning mingle again at the end of the month, and there was again another great turnout. And they continue to have them every last Tuesday of the month. So look forward to that. I did have a chance to stop by and visit our senior citizens at Thompson Park. Just want to give a little shout out that they're back meeting, and they would love to have more people show up. They meet every Tuesday at nine A. M. so, over at Thompson Park. So if you have a chance to get over there, you can, you know, play games, have some conversation, and again, just have a good time. This last week, Councilman Sanchez and I attended the League of California Cities L.A. Division installation and in recognition of the past president, we gave a recognition to Blanca Pacheco for her one-year service as president. It was her first and last in-person meeting that she had for her whole term. And we also want to congratulate Jim Bozagian of the City of Calabasas. He is the incoming president. And this afternoon, I attended the West Santa Ana Branch elected officials briefing. And during the discussion, again, Bellflower's mentioned twice, so one was, you know, we're going to have a parking ride potentially. Let's see, two hundred and thirty-six parking spaces and the...
Actually, let, let...
Oh, let's do a little presentation on that, good.
Well, I'm going to ask Lynn to make a statement on that in the end because I think that they're playing something slippery there on that parking ride.
Oh, yeah, again, it was mentioned, it's being mentioned in the draft, E.I.R. I think the key point on E.I.R. is that they're going to give an extra fifteen days, so it'll be a total of sixty days. So the deadline will be September twenty-eighth for comments. And then the second item they mentioned, Bellflower, just again, just for information, for the maintenance and storage facility, which would be considered at the Hollywood Sports Park. So again, it was just more so just general information, and again, they have a series of virtual public hearings that are coming up this month and then some other, you know, community look at info sessions. So just again, go online and check, and we'll see what happens, so.
Yeah, we just comment on that, I'm not going to ask Lynn to stand up, but the bottom line is, so they're talking about a two hundred and sixty-three space parking ride there, and that's substantially similar to the number we have in our parking structure. I have heard rumors in the past that they are going to try to count that parking structure as part of their parking requirement on the line there. I don't put it past them, and I think that when we start making our comments to them, we're going to make that very clear that the parking structure we built is not part of their parking ride solution there. I just want to make that clear, we want to start getting that out in the community because M.T.A., I don't put anything past them on that, so.
What they did was show a surface lot.
Yeah. That's fantastic, if that's what they carry on, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton?
I don't have anything to say tonight, but I wonder when the train's going to come, though.
Raymond Hamada will tell you that right now.
They're going to start in two thousand twenty-two and they'll have it built by two thousand twenty-eight. How's that sound?
Yeah, that's what they said, whatever.
We can only go by what they're saying.
I know what they say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody has a crystal ball, though. But anyway, that's all I got, Mayor.
All right.
Just joking around. Just joking around.
Maybe we should have one of those graphs on the wall where we can choose a date and then put a little money to see.
Like a pool, a pool.
Yeah, yeah. Opportunity, yeah. Not a bet, an opportunity.
For nonprofits.
So this is our week where schools are beginning to operate again, and the kids are going back in classrooms. And that generates more traffic than we have had for the last year and a half. So be aware as you travel in our streets that kids are going to be in the crosswalks. And I went to a breakfast this morning recognizing the new teachers in the Bellflower Unified, and they're raring to go. They are looking forward to being back in the classroom and greeting the students. And you just felt a real vitality in the group that was there. It'll never be like it was before. I think that this virtual learning is here to stay, it's just going to be implemented inside the classroom as well. I attended the Stonefire Grand Opening, which for those of you that aren't here and in the audience, this is the old J.C. Penney Building down the southern part of our city. That building is a very well-established building that has always been used as J.C. Penney throughout the years. But when they opened up the Lakewood J.C. Penney, this one here was closed down shortly thereafter. But as a kid, you can remember going in there and seeing the main floor, and then the second floor in the mezzanine was where the suits were. I didn't realize there was a third floor in that building. And Martin Howard has his business up there of consulting and drawing and developing things here in this city and other places. And then, of course, Stonefire has a place where you can rent an office space there if you want to have an opportunity to hold court right there in the building. And eventually, we'll get the main floor opened up, and they're talking about have three and four restaurants with a microbrewery. But time will tell on that because personnel is hard to come by, and as a result, it's hard to develop a new project at this point in time. But that is going to be a real focal point of our development on the south side of Artesia Boulevard. So with that, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're coming into fall in about another four weeks or so and changing of the guard here in terms of the atmosphere in the city. Having these stone, the Street Fest has certainly been a refreshing change from not having them. But little by little, we're getting the city opened up again. We don't know how the current virus is going to impact us. We're hopeful that it's not going to get nearly as severe as it was before. And our goal is to get this city hall opened up so that we can have folks here in the, in the audience again like we once did. But the County of L.A. is dictating how that goes and when we do it. As you can see, we're all masked up here. That's not because we're that smart, it's just because the county says that's the way you got to conduct business. So I'm Ray Dutton, and. You know, you don't know who you got up here, so. So we're going to adjourn this meeting, to Bellflower City Council meeting, 5:30 p.m., Monday, August 23rd, 2021. We're adjourned at 7:35.